For that committee, pleasure to see you all. I will now ask the committee to call Mike Jones to check. Can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, I can hear you very well.
Thank you. councillor Jennings, good evening, can you hear us?
Good evening, Mike, yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Banks, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
That's excellent, thank you. councillor Mackinson, good evening.
Good evening, Mike, yes, I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. councillor Roberts, can you hear us okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. councillor Jennings.
You're already asking me, Mike.
That's great, thank you. This slide misheard, thank you, Sarah. Checking the remaining members present at this stage. councillor Smead.
Yeah, I can hear you fine, thank you.
Excellent. I believe in terms of those members who are joining us remotely, those are all who are present at this stage and those present in the room for benefit of those viewing are councillors Jane Corbett, councillors William Shortall and the Chair councillor Leon Tubal, whom I'll now defer to.
Thank you, thank you, Mike, and once again, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. Can I also remind everyone that Jill McCoy is monitoring the live stream on the council website? Jill, can we confirm that is operating directly? Thank you very much. Jill has given us the nod, okay, so thank you very much. Good evening to anyone who's joining us via the live stream. Can I also remind members and officers to please, and this is something we should all be familiar with as a matter of good housekeeping now, please leave your microphone on mute during the meeting until you want to comment, okay? Just try and avoid any feedback or anything like that. In addition, can officers also turn their webcams off unless you are addressing the committee directly? Once a member has spoken, please ensure you mute your mic again so the audio remains clear for everyone else. When officers and members do wish to speak, you have the option of using the hand up feature or alternatively, if you are visible, by attracting my attention on the screen. I'll do my very best to keep my eye on that, okay? Now, when I do bring you in, please ensure you unmute your mic, make yourself heard, let everyone know who you are, and I'll have a brief pause while we ensure you're visible on screen. Once you have spoken, please make sure to lower your hand also if you've raised your hands up. I advise members that only one apology for absence has been submitted by councillor Nick Croft, so if that could be recorded, please, Mike. Okay, so, thank you very much. Item number two, declarations of interest. Can I ask if members have any interest to declare relating or pertaining to any items of business on the agenda this evening? Okay, I can see no hands up, I can see the odd shake of the head. So with that, I'll assume that there are no declarations of interest. Thank you very much. Item number three, can I defer members' attention to pages one to thirteen on the agenda? These relate to the minute of the meeting that was held on the 5th of August 2020? Pages one to thirteen on the agenda? Are the minutes held on the 5th of August 2020 agreed as a true record?
If members would nod your agreement for the benefit of the record, please. Thank you.
Okay, are there any matters arising? I'm seeing shakes of the head. Okay, brilliant. In that case, can we approve the minutes? Is that agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Can I direct members' attention to item number four, question time? Can I advise that we receive one question from councillor Anne O'Burn that was received on Thursday. A copy of the question, together with the accompanying response, will be made available and included in the published minutes of this meeting. Okay? There were no further questions. In respect of item number time, we have the mayoral update. Can I invite Mayor Anderson to provide his update?
Chair, I believe we're still waiting for Mayor Anderson to be able to join us. As members who have already joined us on today's meeting will be aware, there have been a number of technical issues this evening which have affected our hosting of the meeting as well as members and indeed officers joining proceedings this evening. So with your indulgence, we will...
Move to item number six.
Please, Chair.
Councillor Corbett, with your gracious permission, can we move to item number six? Okay, what we'll do for members, we'll move to item number six, which is the mayoral lead councillor Jane Corbett's update on the important work being done. That can be found on pages one to three of the supplementary agenda. Councillor Corbett.
Thanks, Chair. Okay, so I'll just go through this quickly. Hopefully everybody's read this. The key points are the upstream and downstream, as you know. So the Good Business Festival, I thought that was really, really good, to be honest with you. And we had the blueprint for better business principles within there as well. So in terms of purpose-driven business, that's really taking off, which is really good for Liverpool, but it's also good for wider than that. So the Good Business Festival is obviously coming up in reality, if you like, rather than virtually, in March, as long as we get through and we've got the vaccines by then. Just a quick one on digital access. That's a real problem for people right across the city, as you know. There's a little project we're doing at the Everton Ward, which we're learning lessons from. I tried to get it across the city, but I'm still in contact with Vodafone, who are keen to see if they can help out further. Purpose-driven business in terms of fractional investment, that report went through and that links up with regeneration around purpose-led business. Real living wage at the moment is £9.30 an hour and we pay all our direct staff the real living wage. But as you know, early November, it will be realigned and so we'll wait for the Living Wage Foundation to tell us what that will be. In terms of the city council, what we do is we pay that from November. We don't wait until the April. So people miss those key months and we're... Electronics Watch, I haven't managed to make contact with them yet again, but I think they're a really important one, so I apologise for that. Hopefully that's around ethical, digital and phones and everything else. Health and wellbeing board, this is crucial. So if you remember, we signed up as part of the Liverpool Health and Wellbeing Board to be a Marwetts community, as in taking on board the recommendations from Michael Marwetts, Fair Society Healthy Lives that came out in 2010. The group that I chaired with Bishop Portbase agreed at the last meeting that we would see if we could act as an advisory group, the citywide group, which councillor Jennings is on. Just see if we could become an advisory group for the Health and Wellbeing Board around social determinants of health. So that's going back to the next Health and Wellbeing Board on 22nd December. Then just in terms of downstream, all the poverty actions. So poverty action group continues to meet. Again, we keep wrapping that round the basic needs list. If you remember, £200,000 went through to... Fair Share was £150,000 and another £50,000 was for Your Local Pantry Model. So £20,000 will go to the North End and £20,000 to the South End. And the Tourist Foundation are helping us with linking up in the south end of the city. So that's another model for people to be able to use if they'd like that. The good thing about that one is, the Your Pantry Model, is that it's a national one and so you get the advantage of linking it with other community pantries across the country as well and learning from each other and sharing our best practice. Free school meals, you would have seen that the mayor managed to fund that very, very quickly for this half term with £300,000 worth. That takes the money, so I'd like to thank the mayor for that and for Mel, the finance director, because they moved incredibly quickly on that. That costs us £300,000 per week. So that now takes us up to 1.4 million that we've paid out from council funding for free school meal vouchers to make sure that our children continue with free school meal vouchers throughout the holidays, but also through when lockdowns first started. Obviously, the government paid for it right across the summer. The pressure, as you know, is really on. The petition that's online, the government petition's well over a million now for this. I'd urge you to look at that. And that then also links up with, in terms of the funding coming in for essential emergency food and essential supplies, with the £63 million that the government put out across the country for which Liverpool's allocation was 0.9 million. That went straight through to our assistance support scheme and we've already used that. So when you hear in the media that actually we should have used that for free school meals, it had already been spent, as we were told to, by the government, by the end of September. There's a massive pressure to get another £63 million tranche across the country. So there's a new report just come out from Trussell Trust, which we fed into, which came out today, called Local Lifelines. So I can send that round to people as well. We're covered in there and that's pushing very hard for the repeat of the £63 million. And then lastly, the access to justice element of the basic needs list. We've been doing a really good piece of work with the university and funded through ourselves and linked up with Sisters of Advice Liverpool on the contract. And we had the very first network meeting last week, which I chaired, of all the advice agencies, law centres across the city. We're 35 in attendance, all wanting to work collaboratively together. And a report is coming out, and we're looking at it in the steering group next week, which gives us the mapping exercise right across the city, plus the headlines, plus the demand. And that will show what we can actually do together. And I'm looking at whether we can use some of the mayor's hardship fund that remains for that, but I need to talk that through with obviously Mel and with the mayor before that happens. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Corbett, I appreciate that. So just to remind members, we are currently on item number six. Are there any questions forthcoming for councillor Corbett? No indications, okay. Can I move that update you noted, is that agreed? And thank you very much councillor Corbett. Okay, can I direct members' attention to item number five? Then that's the mayoral update. Just stepping back on the agenda now. Can I invite Mayor Anderson to provide the verbal update, please?
Okay, thanks, Chair. Apologies for not being able to get in, although I was in one of the rooms and waiting to get in with councillor Kushner. So apologies for that, I don't know what went on. I logged out and logged in again. Yeah, so basically, just to give you an update on a number of things, I think obviously the best place to start is just talking about Covid and where we are with that. It's obviously, you know, a couple of weeks now since we went into tier three measures. I think the figures of the infection rates in the last seven days are around about 80 down on the previous seven days. Whether we can actually, you know, put that down to any of the measures that we've took, I doubt very, very much because of the incubation period of Covid. But it's good news in terms of the infection rate is down. However, the hospital admissions, sorry, hospital admissions rate is still up and gone up. And the number of deaths have gone up from 61 the previous seven days and over the last seven days up to 74. So you can see that that's climbed. So we're not out the woods by any means and it's a serious worrying concern for us all as we're seeing the infection rates climb. So we've been placed in tier three. We negotiated some funding. People were, you know, commenting on that and talking about what other places were getting. Basically, the government have given the same amounts of money to every area that's been placed in tier three measures. We negotiated £30 million in terms of business support. That is being given out across the city region in Liverpool. I think about £15,000 applications already in so far. There is a bit of a delay in trying to get that out caused by Treasury. And we're trying to work that through very, very quickly with them to try to get that money out there as fast as we can. We negotiated some money in terms of to do track and test and trace. Around about £8 a head it worked out, £14 million across the city region. That's been used to work with public health, with the NHS and others, to try to set up a better track and trace and test and system. And we've also got some money that we can use for enforcement that we're looking at doing and working with other agencies, including the police and others, to see how we can do better enforcement. As I said, you know, look, the fact of the matter is, we, you know, I personally, myself, think that tier three will have an impact, but maybe not at the speed in which we would like to see it. But if we, you know, get to where we think we can get to with tier three, it's possible, it's possible that we'll be back in tier two, you know, sometime at the end of the month, sorry, at the end of November, to make sure that we are, at least in December, able to get through Christmas and support businesses and families and people. But the paramount, you know, issue for us, all of us, is that we try to bring the infection rate and the hospital admission rates down because I know people will have seen the videos that we produced and put out that showed the infection rates and how our hospitals were having to cope with the admission rates in hospitals and it was pretty worrying. It's still, as I said, Chair, a very big concern for us and we're in daily contact, of course, with hospitals. Our ICU units have probably, have gone from around about 90% capacity down to about 80% capacity. But as I said, because the virus lays dormant for so long, it remains to be seen what next week's figures. But I think it's too early to judge on tier three at this juncture and we have to just pay close attention to the figures and I'm sure we'll keep you informed of them moving forward. I think the other thing to touch on is the budget and I think, you know, it clearly is a hugely challenging period for us. However, you'll see from the month five revenue papers that you'll have been sent and I discussed at Cabinet last week, you'll see that only for the Covid pressures and the pressures that are put on us that we probably would have been only about £2 million away from balance in the budgets. So it's the pressures that are on us, excuse me, as a result of Covid, that's really placing us in a difficult position with around about a £15 million overspend, £15.7 million overspend. However, it is a fast-moving sort of piece in terms of the financial situation. And I think it's important that we recognise that because we've had, since Cabinet, for instance, we've had an allocation of funding for the ACC. And as you know, we've allocated around about £6.5 million to the ACC to cover their shortfall and cost pressures as a result of being closed. But as a result of getting £3 million, it means that that £3 million can come off the £15.7 million pressures that we find ourselves in. But there are a number of things that we've... And those papers are on the papers for audit and governance, the Revenue Monitor, period five, and also the Capital Monitor are later on in the agenda. But I think the whole thing in terms of where we are with government and what we managed to get out of them when we had these discussions over tier three, was we gave them a clear warning that Liverpool was in a very precarious position and we were also looking at, you know, the potential of issuing one month four notices and we felt that other councils in the North West were in a similar position with redundancies having to be made just to survive. So government gave us an assurance that they would work with us to actually make sure that we had the ability to set a budget that protected our frontline services and that it would be a legal budget, not just dealing with the deficit for this year and any overspend, but looking at next year's budget as well. So we've asked for a number of things, Chair. And basically, if people recall when we entered into the negotiations with regards to devolution for the city region, we also negotiated a business rate. We went into a pirate scheme. I think people have heard me mention it many times in council and at budget times, where the business rate pirate scheme protected us from actually having a reduction in business rates that were coming into the city as a result of government passport and business rates fully onto councils to keep, which would be detrimental to us. So we negotiated what we call the no detriment clause in that from the government so that we wouldn't lose out. That runs out next year in 21, 22, so it runs out. So we're in conversations with them about extending that for another year. So as I said, we are asking for that. We're also asking for an uplift in terms of our council tax support and the grant, as you know, they've announced, the government, that they are going to have the spending review. It's been announced now for the 25th of November. So we're actually, we should have our allocation, our individual allocation known to us, hopefully till the very early in December, a bit earlier than we normally find out. So we're also talking to them about repayments of Liverpool City Council debt, for instance, through the Public Sector Works Loan Board. We're also talking to them about the minimum, what we call the minimum revenue position, so that if we can take a holiday over that over a number of years, say for instance over three years and set a budget for three years, that'll save us about £18 million over three years. We're also talking to them about PFI and removing the PFI debt. As you know, just recently in Cabinet, we've set aside a full £12 million over three years to support education. And so if we can get some relaxation on the PFI debt and tell them that we're spending that to support children's centres, but also to spend to support the improvements in education, then, and especially to target disadvantaged communities. So we're hopeful that the listeners to that, they say, as long as that money can be ring fenced for education, that they might work with us to actually remove that PFI debt. So the PFI debt that's owed by schools will go directly to schools, but the PFI debt from us, which is around Parklands and Central Library, would be around about £4 million as well. So we're pushing for all of these things. We're also pushing for a change in the apprenticeship levy. So the apprenticeship levy gives us the freedom, we're asking for the freedoms to be able to use some of the apprenticeship levy for ourselves to keep. As you know, as a council and with businesses in the city, they make a contribution to the apprenticeship levy that central government hold and they're holding about £1.6 billion of apprenticeship levy funding. We're asking them to see if we can be allowed to increase the number of apprenticeships, but also using the apprenticeship levy ourselves with the freedom to use on salaries for apprenticeships so we can take on more, especially given post-Covid, the number of young people going to be unemployed. So all of these things, Chair, we're asking for, all of these things. You know, I get a sense that government recognise the real serious position that not only councils are in, but the country's in. So I do detect, more than I've ever detected before, a willingness to listen. And I think that was as a result of the pressure that we've put on, not just ourselves, but also with core cities and working alongside the LGA as well. So that's really just an update on where we're at. Jane mentioned before about the £63 million and also about the vouchers and the money that we got. And of course, she's absolutely right, but I think the allocation that we got during the summer also only paid for our £900,000 out of that £63 million. Our allocation chunk of that per capita number of kids on school meals was about £900,000. So it's £300,000 a week, so it only lasted for three weeks anyway. We've set up a just given page as well. It's doing reasonably well, but also we've allocated the money anyway. So what money we do get in, what money we do get in between now and Christmas will be used to support those disadvantaged families, families who are, you know, having to use free school meals vouchers to give them that extra support over Christmas. And that was just a run-through. Chair, as I said, once again, apologies for being late, but happy to take any questions if people want to ask any.
Before we proceed with any questions, I would, of course, on behalf of everyone, like to express our condolences on a loss of your brother. That's, of course, from everyone. I know it's been an extremely testing time for you and your family. Are there any questions arising from members? It does not appear so, so if I may, Mayor, if I had my own question, that might stimulate some further... We often talk about the numbers, we often talk about the impact on revenue, costs, what it does to our budgets, but clearly there is a very human side to all of this. So I would be really interested in your own view. Does it concern you that there may be some people in the city who still aren't taking, shall we say, the gravity of this crisis seriously enough? And do you have a message for those people?
Yeah, I think in terms of the gravity of the situation with regards to Covid, it is absolutely, you know, targeting the poorest as well as, you know, those with comorbidity issues, age, obesity, you know, dependency. It's targeting the poorest communities and people within the city. Of course, the ones that rely and depend on us so much and there's no surprise to me that the correlation between poverty and government cuts, whether it's in public health and other areas, the National Health Service is seeing, you know, those death rates increase. So, you know, the very, very clear message to people who believe that, you know, this is a, you know, conspiracy theory linked to 5G and all of those things, you know, there's too many people in this city that are already suffering with Covid themselves and too many people already suffered with debts. And the fact of the matter is, it is costing us as well. It's costing us hugely in terms of the issues around loss of income, loss of revenue. You know, our leisure centres, as I've mentioned previously, chair loss of income from them, but we're paying staff, lots of car parking revenue, lots of other revenue coming into the city as a result. And of course, the huge impact that it's having on businesses and, you know, the fact that people who are in work now or being, if you like, furloughed under this new grant scheme are not going to return and go back to work. And that's a real tragedy for them personally, but also for our city. And I did a webinar yesterday on mental health and the amount of the impact that it's having on people's mental health and wellbeing is enormous. And I think, you know, we are at a stage now, Chair, where I think, you know, the councils heard me say and I've publicly stated that, you know, for the last 10, well, 11 years now since I've been leader of the council, you know, we've faced nothing other than cuts from this government, this administration. And the reality is, is that we've got no more flesh or bone. Now, we're into bone, there's no flesh or fat left, it's into bone. And, you know, I'm not prepared to cut into frontline services. You know, our job as a councillor is to protect the people of this city. That's why we were elected, that's what we're here for. And we'll do that, you know, and you've seen that, whether it's with Milvina and Brushwood, we've seen that with how we quickly came to the rescue and supported the free school meals. That's what, you know, keeps us going. The fact that we need to be here to support people who are desperately going to be needing our help, leadership and support in the next few months, because, believe you me, I can't see this virus going away for some time yet. And the challenges are going to be really dire, really problematic for us, but we must get through them and we've got to unite and stick together. As I've constantly said, you know, talking about this with an interview I did, you know, people talking to me about my brother's death, we need united as a family to support one another. And as a city, we've got to do that. You know, our enemy is Covid-19 and the consequences of that, not each other. And if we stick together, unite and work together, then we'll get through it. And I'm also, you know, delighted to say, Chair as well and on public record, that the leaders of all the parties are working together with me on this. They are united as well behind our fight. They are united as well behind our fight because they all see this as a fight that we must win and we've got to stick together to win it.
Thanks, Mayor. councillor Kennedy.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Malcolm.
Just a couple of comments. One, also to reiterate my condolences to you and the family. You've been through, you've been through an awful lot. And despite that, it's been evident that you've led from the front in all of this. And I really appreciate the strength you've personally shown and the imagination and the ability to face the problems coolly and deal with some of the immediate effects. As someone who's had experience of how different places have reacted to Covid, I'm currently in self-isolation. Today, just anecdotally, we received, Liliana's here with me, we received a delivery from Morrison's. And the chap came to the door without a mask on, you know, I mean, I had my mask on as I came to the door, he didn't. And he didn't seem to even flinch, he didn't kind of go, oh, yes, I should have my mask on, you've got your mask on. I just get this sense that people haven't quite, haven't quite got it at all about what's going on and the dangers and how the mask helps me protect you and your mask helps you protect me. It just seems people are going up and down the street, no masks, you know. You walk up and down the street in Madrid and everybody's got masks. In fact, the government have made them compulsory. So, you know, that's just a reflection and I'd be interested in your comments.
Well, interestingly, Malcolm, I share your views about the laxity of how, in particular, our retail sector is conducting itself. And I've spoke to the city solicitor today to see what we can do to enforce the, you know, the rules and the regulations around Covid. Now, we know quite a substantial amount of the things that we can do has to be done by the police. However, there are things that we can do as well. Because, you know, I'm getting regular, and I shared one with the city solicitor today, an email from a woman who actually explained to me that she'd gone into a supermarket today. And, you know, not only were the staff not wearing it, but the security guard insulted her by when she challenged the security guard and said, well, no one's going to do anything about it, are they? So, you know, we just, we'll basically do what we like. And I think it is incumbent on us to actually make it absolutely clear. You know, we've gone into tier three. And this is going to have, as I've just said, and I'm not going to repeat, but it is going to have a devastating impact on businesses. And the best thing we can do to businesses is to get out of it as quick as we can. And we're only going to do that if we genuinely, genuinely work together to actually try to bring that infection rate down. This virus thrives on human contact. That's what it thrives on, that's what keeps it going, that's how it survives, is by spreading itself through human contact. That's why we're seeing, you know, with schools going back and universities and students coming back and higher education coming back, that we've seen the increase in the virus in the city where we live cheek by jowl with each other, most in terraced houses, seventy percent. So we've got to do something and that means making those responsible. And that includes the supermarket managers and regional managers, whether it's in the city centre or whether it's on the outskirts, in the big supermarkets and retail outlets in the outskirts of the city. We've got to get them to follow the rules and implement the rules that are currently there. And I, you know, just simply say, I hear what you're saying. I said, I'm dealing with it, you know, today and tomorrow. And it will be a priority for me over the next coming days to make sure that we get this message out loud and clear, that we're not going to tolerate supermarkets. Because if we can close them down, then we should do to send out a clear, clear message to people. You know, this was the argument, Malcolm, I'm sorry, Chair, for mentioning this, but this was the argument, what I had, when gyms were closed in this city. I actually made the point that the gyms were more safer than supermarkets. Because in the gyms, you were social distancing, you were wearing your masks. Machinery was getting washed down before the next tranche of people come in. And then you were going to a supermarket where no one was wearing any masks or face coverings and people were walking around without a care in the world. So, you know, we've got to get that message across and I agree with you. And that's what we'll do over the next couple of days.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Melton. Thanks for those perspectives. Can I bring councillor O'Brien in now, please? Tricia.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to add to what Malcolm said. I think it'd be much better if this country did have a policy where we all wore masks, we'd get used to it then. And Spain's a much hotter country than this, so it's much less comfortable over there. I'd like to flag up this thing about supermarkets. I mean, councillor Mundy sent round a model letter for us councillors to send into them. And I'd like to see more people doing something about it. A Labour Party member and friend of mine, who I know is truthful, said that she's queried this matter about people not wearing masks a lot at a particular supermarket. She's called the manager this time and he said to her, the police told her they didn't need to enforce the wearing of masks. Now, I cannot believe that statement is true, that the police told the supermarket manager he didn't need to obey the rule about masks. But this is the kind of rubbish nonsense that is being given to members of the public when they challenge the situation. And I'd just like to let you know that, Joe, because you're talking about it in the next two days. This is the sort of thing that's going on.
Hear the message.
Thank you very much. I don't think there are any further questions, I can't see any indicated. Okay, with that in mind then, we have already done item number six. So can we move that the update be noted? Is that agreed? Thanks to the mayor and thanks for the questions. And can we move to item number seven in that instance? That is the update from Grant Thornton. Can I refer members' attention to pages fourteen to twenty? And can I invite Georgia to introduce the report?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Can I just check that you can hear me? Yes, okay, excellent, thank you. This is just really for information for members on the results of the Redman Review, which is a review commissioned by government into local government audit. I wasn't really going to go into very much detail. I think the key recommendations are on pages four and five of my report that I've submitted. And that just kind of summarizes those key messages coming out of that review. A lot of it's kind of around kind of where the audit, as it stands at the moment, really delivers what the Local Audit and Accountability Act intended for it to deliver. And we can see that there's potentially a new regulator going to be set up, which will replace the FRC, the Financial Reporting Council, and public sector audit appointments who currently tender the audit contracts. And that's really kind of going to bring together their functions into one body. Also, the fee structure will be looked at going forward just to ensure that resources are available to deliver the quality requirements of an audit. I'm sure members will recall, before Covid struck, previous years, the deadline had been the thirty first of July, which is actually a very tight deadline, both for members of the finance teams of local authorities and for ourselves in terms of delivering an audit. So the recommendation is that it reverts to September, as it was a few years back. And there's also some recommendations around simplification of the accounts and making them a bit more understandable and readable to kind of encourage that kind of transparency of reporting as well. So really, it was really just to update yourselves on that, you know, and the changes that you're likely to see going forward around a local government audit, really. And then just briefly, if I may, Chair, I'll just give you a brief update in terms of the audit, which is ongoing at the moment. So we are in the middle of the audit of the council's accounts at the moment with a view to delivering the audit opinion by the deadline of the thirtieth of November. So we haven't identified any significant issues at the moment, which I'm sure you'll be pleased to hear. But I would stress, the audit is still in progress at the moment. We have still got kind of further testing and work to do around the audit. And we will, of course, bring a full report back to yourselves. And I understand the engagement ring lead, Andrew Smith, has been talking to Mel about kind of how that reporting is going to work and the data, you know, potential committee for us to report to. So that was all I was going to say, Chair, but happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Georgia. Thank you very much for that update. And thank you for your taking the time to kind of, shall we say, summarise the findings of the review regarding. The thing that stands out to me, as you mentioned, changes to fees specifically, it is the suggestion is fees will be increased, which obviously caught my attention. Now, there probably would be an expectation in the, shall we say, the private sector that with an increase of fee, there will be, shall we say, a higher expectation of the audit delivering what you deem loosely value. How do you view that as kind of increased fees impacting this expectation in local authorities and the audits of local authorities?
So one of the things that will change actually from next year, the National Audit Office have produced a new code of audit practice. And one of the things within that is a different slant on the value for money work that we do. So at the moment, we kind of really just do quite a high level review of arrangements and it's a kind of yes or no opinion almost, you know, that you have arrangements in place to deliver value for money from twenty twenty one. That will be a much broader piece of work and it will really kind of go more deeply into the kind of the arrangements around governance and finance and decision making. And you'll get a much broader and more informed report around that work. And that will replace the annual audit letter, which we've brought in previous years. So it should, you know, that will be one of the ways in which kind of the increased work and the increased fees will hopefully, you know, add some value around kind of areas potentially for improvement or that reassurance in a more kind of broader and deeper sense that the arrangements you have in place are fit for purpose. So that's just an example really of what will change from next year.
Effect is reflected in its outputs of the actual audit report?
Yes, yeah, you'll see an increase in a longer audit report with more detail in it.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks for clarifying that. Are there any further questions arising in respect of the report and the update? Okay, in that instance, can I move that the update be noted? Thank you very much, Georgia, for your time and thanks for taking the time to update us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, can I refer members to item number eight? That is the risk-based verification process. That can be found on the agenda, pages twenty one to thirty five. Can I invite Mayor Anderson to comment on the report, please, as set out on those pages? Anderson, you unmute.
Sorry, Chair, sorry about that. Yeah, it's largely a technical report. It's a, it's a report that, you know, explains the authority uses a risk assessment analysis system to help the process of claiming benefits and make it easier and to help ensure that the evidence that is requested is requested where it's necessary to request. Without the system, all the claimants would be required to actually provide the same standard of evidence. So it gives us that flexibility. It's a government requirement and the practice is examined and in continuation agreed by the committee annually. It's something that we bring forward every single year. So it's an updated policy really. And there's an equality and impact assessment is provided to update and review the practice, really. So it's just an update, Chair.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from members arising? Okay, can I move that the risk-based verification policy continues to be applied in the Revenue and Benefits Services? Is that agreed? Thanks, Chris. Thumbs up from Sarah. Thanks, Andrew. I think we're there, aren't we? Okay, thank you very much. With that agreed, can I move members' attention to item number nine? That is the capital programme and revenue monitors and that is month five. Month five being up to and including September twenty twenty. That can be found in the main body of the agenda, pages thirty six to seventy nine. Can I invite, sorry, Mayor, I was going to invite you, but I'll let you.
Sorry, Chair, jumping the gun. This is two reports that we took to Cabinet last week. And basically, it's just month five. It's just a report that we provide to Cabinet every month, an update on where we are with the capital programme and the revenue monitoring programme as well. So basically, it just identifies a decrease in the twenty twenty one capital programme of just over a million from period four. And it identifies the twenty 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 one capital programme currently two hundred and eighty three point thirty three million. And it's a five-year capital programme, is eight hundred and forty nine. It's a net increase of around about three and a half million. The changes to the programme are from month four and the details. So basically, it's just that increase of one point four million pound from period four. So it's the same as what it was before that. So it's on the agenda, as you rightly said, it's been approved by Cabinet and it takes our borrowing within approved limits to nine hundred and two million as of the thirty first of August twenty twenty. Happy to see questions on the capital one or move on to the revenue, Chair, if you want.
Yeah, take it collectively, yeah.
And the revenue, again, same thing, it's been through Cabinet last week. And it's month five again. And you'll see the overspend, as we discussed, as I mentioned earlier on, which primarily relates to Covid nineteen overspend since month five. Again, a lot of fluidity around this as we challenge governments and put in requests for funding to be given back to us, lost funding and things that we've spent. So you can see that as of the period four, the fourth tranche, sorry, of emergency Covid funding we've put in for nineteen million, it's been announced by the government that obviously we're putting to tier three. It remains to be seen what we get back of the nineteen million that we've submitted. So it's a moving feast, as I said, Chair. It changes almost on a weekly basis. And the report itself explains that. So as I said, I've touched on it in my comments about the budget and the finance and where we are at. And as I said, basically, that fifteen point seven overspend is Covid related. And I think it's very, very clear that if we hadn't had Covid nineteen and the overspends, that I think we probably only have an overspend of around about two million, which is remarkable considering where we are and where we've been as a city for this financial year.
Thanks, Mayor. Are there any questions arising from members? Okay, I do have one of my own, maybe that you answered this in conjunction with Peter Joe. But there was one particularly striking statistic and it was a kind of long-term projection. That stuck out to me and you can find that on page forty five. And it relates to the kind of future forecasts for ratio of financing costs to net revenue streams. Now, my understanding of this is, this is basically how much we are paying of our total revenue budget on our debt. And that projects by twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, ten point one percent of our entire revenue budget will be spent on financing costs. Now, I understand that to mean, and you may be able to confirm this or offer an alternative explanation, that ten percent of all our expenditure will be spent on service and our debt. Now, if that is the case, that really does highlight the need for help from central government, doesn't it? When we could be using that to front line, you know, fund tens of millions of pounds, that could be used supporting frontline services that we so desperately need. But that was a statistic that really stood out and that presumably given the uncertainty that we face, this open-ended uncertainty, something that could actually be even worse when we reach that point in time.
Yeah, absolutely, Chair. And equally, you're right, I mean, I'm sure Peter can give you the finance view on that. And I'd welcome him commenting on that. But you're absolutely right and the reality is, it could be, you know, a lot worse. We've used some of our, you know, assets, if you like, in terms of land and stuff, whatever, to support and reduce the borrowing requirements, for instance, to build our schools and things. and reduce the borrowing requirements, for instance, to build our schools and things like that. You know, we've used, you know, capital receipts to support that. A borrowing could have been a lot higher to provide us with the things that we need. So you're spot on that it is, again, a double whammy for councils like Liverpool. Because you can see in any borrowing that we've made, that, you know, they are, it is essential. It's not something that is frivolous. It's not something that has been misused. So everything that we do in relation to borrowing has been for essential purposes. So I'm sure Peter can come in and just explain to you about the percentage figures, Chair.
Yeah, I mean, just to add, it's our capital program as well going forward. So I think it picks up some of our big schemes like Paddington, which have got a payback in future years. So whilst you might see it going up, we're talking about it being net, the net cost. So it's net revenue costs. But schemes like Paddington will pay back in future years as well. So it picked, there's a timing issue as well. So whilst it's going up, it's sort of the scale of the future capital program and the scheme. So that, in addition to what the mayor said, that's a factor as well.
I mean, so it might, it might be useful, Chair, that if we can look at some of that and the breakdown and the way we report, that it actually gives a bit of clarity around, for instance, some of the investors we're in. You know, because Peter's absolutely right. You've heard, again, you've heard me say this at this committee, but also in terms of the investment that we make, not just we make, but of course, the CA through the SIF money into Paddington Village, you know, when we get up and running phase one of Paddington Village, which is next year. You know, we'll be bringing in around about 7 million pound in revenue funded through business rates from those businesses that are in phase one. And then, of course, we've got two other phases to go. But that'll, of course, apply to everything that we're doing in terms of, you know, we're doing pop-up studios on Ed's Lane and the Littlewood building on Ed's Lane. And that expenditure, that capital expenditure, which of course has a revenue implication, we recognize that. But the revenue that we'll get back in business rates and stuff will actually, you know, outweigh that. So, you know, in some senses, you know, if you look at that overall figure, you know, you go, wow. But hopefully, we'll be able to bring that down over time. But that's, but that still doesn't take away your central point, which is crucial. That is that, you know, we shouldn't be actually using some of the growth fund that we're already getting now to pay for those vital services that people need. We should be actually using that to put into further growth. And that's the perverseness of having a so-called conservative government on the side of business and the economy and growth, who actually punish cities like Liverpool that is trying to grow its way through this, you know, austerity period.
councillor Jennings, did you have a question?
It's okay, Chair, thank you. It's sort of covered within that answer. Thank you anyway.
Peter, did you want to come in for the final point or?
No, I've just lowered my hand, sorry. It was a bit late.
No problem, no problem. Okay, are there any further questions arising? Okay, in that instance, can I move that we note both the reports? Is that agreed?
Indications of agreement.
Indications of agreement, okay. In that instance, can we move to item number 10 then, please? That is the governance risk management and internal control update. That can be found on pages 80 to 99. Can I invite Mayor Anderson again to comment firstly on the report as set out on those pages?
Okay, Chair, thanks for that. Well, again, just to give you, this is to report that significant progress has been made over the last 10 months to further develop and improve the framework, the governance framework and system of internal control. It's obviously in spite of all the the challenges that we faced unforeseen COVID-19 from March onwards, we've been able to proceed and continue to work to develop this program. So as I said, the COVID-19, as we all recognize, needed a, you know, swiftly prioritization and governance arrangements to to be established. So, you know, a lot of work was done by people, by officers to work on that COVID prioritization. And the governance arrangements, the governance arrangements to actually deliver on that. So the framework though, the governance framework remains a priority for us. And it's enabled us to actually make so much progress. And we've done that, as I said. And I think credit goes to all of our officers as well for being able to manage all the pressures and all the things that we've been placing them under with COVID. But at the same time, being able to do work like this. So the good governance is, of course, and good governance is at the centre of what we want to do. And that framework, as I said, continues to be developed. It will be collated with all the indicators, all the good governance indicators, our track record in terms of progressing against governance issued by the governance statements, our annual governance statement for each directors. And it'll report and will continue to report on a quarterly basis to statutory officers group and management team, with a summary provided to audit and governance select committee at that time. The due diligence work is now well established and meets on a regular basis. The group meets on a regular basis. The group works and there's been focus and there's due diligence undertaken with developers around the disposal of land and buildings. The next step will be to expand this and to look at due diligence arrangements for other transactions and relationships with third parties. But just to remind people before the spread of COVID-19 was declared the pandemic, the council had commenced a new exercise to remap and look at fraud risks across the whole range of council services. And service areas have been tasked with completing fraud risk registers to support our overall risk management practices. So internal law, this is working to undertake an ongoing impact assessment to understand the evidence of the effects of COVID-19 across the councils. And it's formed the basis of our internal orders, plan of work for the whole of 2020-21. So the Committee on Standards in Public Life has just produced and published the report on the review of local government's ethical standards and identified some best practice recommendations, which have been reported to the member development group, which will review the council's relevant procedures, Chair.
Are there any questions from members? Okay, can I move that we note the reports? Is that agreed? Councillor Kennedy, are you indicating to speak or agreeing?
Just expressing my agreement with your motions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, in that instance, item number 11, please. That's the annual internal order report and opinion, which the mayor has just alluded to, 2019 to 2020. And that can be found on pages 100 to 114. Again, may I invite Mayor Anderson to introduce the report, please?
Yeah, and as I say, Chair, it's based on all that we're completed for 1920. And it's in the report, it's throughout, given throughout the report. And it shows the order's approach to the completion of that work. It, you know, it talks about, you know, the key and high-risk governance areas to support the Ireland's internal order report itself. No significant issues were identified in the course of the core financial system audits themselves. The audit coverage during the year has provided sufficient evidence that controls are in place to govern the core financial systems, the sound, and they are substantially adhered to. It was evident in the last quarter of the financial year that there would be significant implications, of course, in relation to COVID-19 pandemic. But there are no limited options, with the exception of a school, which does not impact on the overall opinion. So the divisional manager governance and audit and assurance can provide acceptable assurance that the council's governance risk and framework is operating as intended, with a medium risk to the control environment. So I think, as I said, basically, it's set out on pages 100 and 114 in the agenda, Chair. And it explains in detail really the work that's been undertaken and done.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members? Okay, again, can I move that we note the reports? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay. If I refer members then to item number 12, that's the annual internal orders counter fraud report, 2019-2020. And that can be found on pages 115 to 124 on the agenda. Can I invite Mayor Anderson again to introduce the report as set out on those pages?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's the purpose of the report to present the work carried out during the last year to minimize the risk of fraud, bribery and corruption occurring within and against the council. There is an acceptable assurance that the council has effective measures in place during 2019 to 2020 to enable the prevention and detection of inaccuracies, fraud and error, which presents a medium risk to the organisation. Work will continue in 2020-21 to ensure that the council responds effectively to all fraud risks, including those arising from COVID-19. The council has commenced a new exercise to remap, as I've just explained in the previous one, to remap fraud risks across the whole spectrum of council services. Areas have been tasked, as I said, again, in the previous report, with completing specific fraud registers to support the overall risk management practices, which will ultimately be collated into a council fraud risk register. And of course, as I said, the COVID-19 pandemic has increased the number of fraud-related risks for local governments and the wider community in general. Immediate responses to risks and operation requirements have been required, which has impacted on the ability of all councils to continue managing some of their existing fraud risks. It's intended, Chair, that the internal law that will report to the audit and governance committee twice on corporate fraud issues. So there will be a report coming to this committee at a later stage.
Are there any questions from members? Okay, can I move that we note the reports? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. Item number 13, this is the ICO, the Information Commissioners Office, their order, the data protection and information governance surveillance inspection. That can be found on pages 125 to 145. 125 to 145.
Yeah, Chair, and again, the council during the three-month period up to, including August 2020, has been subject to a number of external audits, the main one being the ICO. And this was a very extensive audit, which covered over 9,000 pieces of paper and 45 interviews. The Information Commissioners Office were pretty thorough. This was considered timely in light of the impacts of the implementation of the Data Protection Act 2018 and the volume and extent of information requests received and processed by the council. In order for our performance and compliance to be assessed independently by the national sector regulator in terms of F O Y, the council deal with over 2,000 and 2,200 requests every year, many of which involve multiple service areas and which are often complex. The cost to the council in dealing with such requests cost us just short of half a million pound. The assessments and framework covered three strands of the inquiry, governance and accountability, information and security, and also freedom of information. And as can be seen from the report, the council received the highest assurance in two strands and some suggested recommendations for scope of improvement, which are being implemented. The ICO also found a number of areas of best practice operating within this council. And also, they referenced levels of assurance represents basically a comprehensive assessment of city council's practices, processes and systems for information management and confirm that the city council has robust, effective and compliant arrangements in place, Chair. The council also took, undertook an inspection from the Office of the Investigatory Powers Commissioner. And again, inspection which found good compliance from Liverpool City Council. That's it, Chair.
Any questions from members? Okay, can I move that we note the reports? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Now, this leads us to the penultimate item, and this is a motion regarding the electronic warfare event. Now, I'll ask members to bear with me because obviously the standard procedures for motions obviously still apply. Though they do become potentially a little bit unwieldy in this format. So we'll ask that members do bear with me. Now, if we have a motion that was submitted originally, I believe from time ago, in the name of councillors Tom Crohn and Lawrence Brown, in the event that they are not here, which they aren't, I'm going to ask councillor Sarah Jennings if she wishes to move the motion. That motion can be filed in appendix one for reference. Councillor Jennings.
Chair, sorry, just to interrupt then. I mean, it's just a question really, and a care. And I don't know what the city solicitors' views are on this motion. Because it's worthwhile, Chair, I just beg your indulgence, but for you just to, and the rest of the members, just to have some information. Before the event was cancelled, I had discussions with councillor Crohn, who wanted to move a motion to the council. And I explained to him that the event had been cancelled and that I intended setting up a panel to look at how the council used its moral compass and guidance to actually look at how our buildings that we have some control over or ownership of can be used. And I explained that, and of course, people heard me state this loudly and clearly at the last council meeting, when I informed council that I was going to ask councillor Shortall to, who was pretty vociferous on this issue, and rightly so, that he would actually chair a group of people that would look at how the council would introduce a statement and something that we should stick with and adhere to to actually make sure that our buildings weren't used that went against the code that we drew up. Of course, the difficulty, Chair, just to remind people about some of the things that are being getting asked of us, is that the Arena and Convention Centre, while, you know, we, if you like, own the building, it's run by a company and that our board of directors. So we can't force them. But of course, I'm on that. And so was Wendy Simon, the deputy mayor. And so it would be our intention to make sure that we voted through the recommendations from the group that councillor Shortall will chair. Because that will be taken to Cabinet, it will be, it'll come back to this committee. And then, of course, it will be endorsed by full council. So alls I'm saying, Chair, is I think this is superfluous. I don't think it should be here. I think it's the Greens trying to play some sort of political game with this. We've already given a commitment that we're going to do it. We've already given a commitment that we're going to make sure that we have an ethical framework in place. But this is about them wanting to pretend to pretend that they're in charge of this and that they've brought it, which couldn't be further from the truth. And I was just wondering what the city solicitors' view on this is that, given that the event didn't take place, given that we've got a commitment to have an ethical framework that we'll bring back to council. That's what's been clearly stated. That's what's been agreed. And so in my view, as I said, I think it's pretty superfluous this and it really shouldn't be here.
Well, I'll invite councillor Jennings to speak now. One thing to draw members' attention to immediately is the amendment, which does reflect how things have moved on subsequently since the meeting at the end of September. So we will leave that in mind for now, Mayor. And we will revisit the amendment shortly. But councillor Jennings, please.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that the mayor and councillor Crohn had a conversation. But I think this was really to put on record the fact that this event had been planned, even despite two fairly high-profile other events earlier in the year, which were also cancelled for similar reasons. And yet, this was still very much tabled to go ahead. So I think this was to just kind of draw a line under the kind of potential nature of events going on going forward. And we'd be happy to accept the amendment, which might cut this conversation nice and short anyway, if the mayor was so minded to let that go through, because it is ultimately in praise of mayoral activity. So that normally gets a nod. And so really, what we wanted to make So really what we wanted to make sure that this was a marker saying that this is not acceptable for Liverpool City and that, I thought it was written in a fairly neutral, apolitical manner, just stating that we as responsible owners of the ACC should state that this is the kind of thing that we don't want to see going forward. It's as simple as that really. As I say, happy to accept the amendment, thank you.
In spirit of consensus and cooperation then, can I invite councillor Roberts to introduce and move his amendment?
Thanks, Chair. Well, I think the mayor's pretty much preempted everything I was going to say, it was just to say that we've since moved on a bit, haven't we, since this motion was submitted? We do have that commitment to set up a panel, to set up an ethical charter for the city for, you know, for what sort of events that we hold in future, so, well, that's pretty much it, you know. I've made some amendments, I'd be interested in hearing what the mayor has to say about this. The fact was made at the September meeting to set up that ethical charter panel and I think it maintains the general sense of the motion, which was the general wider opinion of the council anyway. So yeah, I'll move the amendment.
Chair, can I just recommend that we approve it but actually delete everything above where it says the committee? So it says this committee recognises Liverpool City Council's longstanding commitment, so we take out all the other stuff about what's gone before or whatever and then we just agree. Councillor Jennings, I don't need to be mentioned or made in anything and that's not how things get approved by me mentioning my name, it's because we've already agreed that we would do what's right and that was asking councillor Shortall to look at how we come up with that. So I think just going straight to that, you know, third paragraph, committee recognises Liverpool's longstanding commitment, I think that's enough, James, councillor Roberts, to actually be approved and supported.
Yeah.
Do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah.
I think you've pointed out that that's the functional part of the amendment and it certainly commits us to a concrete action which would have us come back with, you know, the future plans as set out by the...
Yeah, I think that's quite key actually councillor Roberts, the fact that it highlights, it's the pertinent part, it highlights that there is a future process being established and also that there will be further reviews and scrutiny and I think that is what amendments and should really, well, not amendments, but motions should be about and that's making sure that they make a tangible difference, establishing a committee, making sure that there's opportunities to review its progress in the future. I think that lends itself to quite a meaningful motion in my personal view. So councillor Roberts, I'm not sure if Jeanette McLaughlin wants to come in at this point, Jeanette, sorry, I noticed your hand.
Chris? Did you just say this motion went to the council at the last meeting, so how it ended on the agenda was, it was actually a longer motion originally drafted, ended with these three paragraphs, which was submitted to the council and to the city to deal with. So was I saying councillor, couple of motions actually...
Chair, can I just come back up on something which is important, Chair, for us to understand? If you look at The Guardian today, it talks about a number of arenas being taken to court because of the cancellation of the religious one that was on. The part that I'm asking to be taken out of this motion is not factually right because it says the council notes that after the intervention of the elected mayor that the AC has confirmed it will now not be hosting the show. Well, that is the case, that the ACC is not hosting the show, but it was the people that were providing, the people that were running the process that pulled out, so it was not ACC Liverpool that ended that. So we've got to be careful that we don't give the impression that we ended this, it was them themselves that decided that they were, because of COVID-19, going to have the event. So that needs to be made absolutely clear and that's why I think it's important that we just go for what I've said committee recognises and that way it covers everything. I still think it's superfluous, I still think that it's not really necessary, given that I've given and we've given at the council meeting a public commitment to, you know, I've even named councillor Shortall as the chair of that task group that's going to look at the ethical framework and position that we come up with regarding using buildings. So I don't think we can be any more categorically clear than that, Chair, but I'm happy to accept the motion, but it needs to take out that paragraph.
Councillor Shortall?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what the mayor said and one of the reasons I'm here is to show that the mayor herself and the committee keep business, that's all we're here. So I want to give reassurance to people, we're carrying out the instructions as the mayor said on the 30th of September, I've followed them through and we'll be setting up the panel committee, we'll be defining precisely focused sets of core principles and we're trying to achieve these principles through consultation and collaboration with stakeholders. So, you know, we mean, I think we say, and we'll achieve what we have to do and we will be back to the council for a debate and discussion on this matter and I'm going through. So I echo the sentiments of the mayor and we're doing what we need to do. But what can you say then?
Thank you councillor, councillor Shortall. Councillor Jennings?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think it's a missed opportunity to put down a marker specifically about this event, that's the only thing, and to say that we don't want this to go ahead now, City, and by removing that reference is, I don't know, it just misses the point, but if it can get passed with another minor amendment, then so be it.
It's a missed opportunity for the leaflet.
It wouldn't go in a leaflet.
Chair, if I may come in, apologies, you called me in before but the IT failed just as you called me in. If I can go back to the procedural point that's been raised a couple of times. After other decisions have been taken, now, if... ...actions to be refused if they're not capable of having practical effect, and I would submit that because matters have moved on since this motion was first proposed to go to council and it wasn't chosen for debate, that it's now no longer capable of having the practical effect that was envisaged because of the task group that has been set up. So I just wanted to make those comments because I know that point was raised early on. Clearly, Chair, it's for the committee if they decide that they want to agree a form of motion now. I do think in terms of procedure, if it were a full council motion, we would be ruling it out as not being capable of having practical effect at this stage.
The ultimate paragraph reiterates what we've done previously, which is welcome, it reiterates our commitment. The second paragraph actually perhaps gives some tangible meaning, particularly the element committee further requests an update on progress from ethical charter at the next meeting of the Audit and Governance Committee. So for me, those two paragraphs are, the final two paragraphs are possible if the rest of the committee are amenable to it as being a substantive motion. So councillor Roberts, are you happy to move, and I'm mindful it's difficult for everyone to keep up with the nature of this meeting, but councillor Roberts, are you happy to move the final two paragraphs commencing from committee recognises ending with governance committee? Are you happy to move that as the substantive motion now?
Yeah, I move the motion.
Do we have a second there? Councillor Kushner?
Yeah, I don't want to second it now, I just, I mean, I'm a little bit late coming in, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just a little bit confused as to why when we've just heard from the city solicitor that it's got no, it's pointless, are we moving it?
Well, I don't, it is quite pointless in the final two paragraphs, I don't think that would be my view, certainly not, I think it just reiterated a commitment to doing something and, you know, reiterating a commitment that is important to people, I think in itself is worthwhile, that'd be my personal view. Councillor Roberts?
Just rereading the motion, yeah, looking at those final two paragraphs, I do think it's important to ask for an update on the work of the panel, that's the actual, the actionable part of the motion, isn't it? I do think we do need to have some sort, although actually I've just looked at the agenda and it seems, they seem to think that the next audit committee meeting is in a week's time, so I hope not, let's hope there's a bit more time. So let's hope there's a bit more time than that, but yeah, no, I do think we need a report back from the ethical charter panel at some point and I'd like to, you know, hear that reported back. And that's the substantive part of this motion, that's what we're calling for, so that's why I'm moving it.
Listen, yeah, to move progress, let's go with that, but I think councillor Kushner and, you know, what the city solicitor has just said, I started my comments by saying I think it was superfluous, it just didn't need to be here, you know, we've heard, you know, councillor Shortall exactly put it out there, exactly what I said at the council meeting and that it would come back to council for the final say and that people would be able to have a debate and input. So, you know, I don't think we, you know, when you put these things on public record, they're on public record and, you know, that's what we've committed to doing and that's what we're doing. So, you know, if it comes back to this committee, it will also come back to cabinets, it will also, you know, have a group itself that will probably report to all the select committees that are covered by this, it's important to reach them. So, you know, look, I'm relaxed about it, just let's move on, but it is superfluous, we've already given the commitment and if it reports or wants a report to this committee, it will also report to cabinet and it will also report to full council, which as you know, is the supreme governing body of the council.
Mindful that councillor Roberts has proposed the motion, do we have a second there? Councillor Jennings?
Councillor Jennings would like to comment further.
Councillor Jennings would like to comment?
Yeah, I still want to comment, the fact that we've completely taken out any reference to warfare, to the electronic warfare and the fact that we don't want an event of that nature in our city, where we quite often get motions coming to full council saying, council welcomes this, council is proud of this, with no actual action point. To delete those first two paragraphs is... What the first two paragraphs of the original motion say is we welcome the fact that this event will not be taking place in our city and we've managed to kind of negate that completely from the motion, so...
Chair?
I don't know, I just find it's really frustrating that the key point, the key element about stating our digital warfare event has been erased.
Chair, that is just totally disingenuous and it's not what is being said at all. I don't know how long councillor Jennings has now been a councillor, but that's not how panels or task groups or task forces are used in the council, they get reported back to people. What you're actually saying is that what it should do is make a statement that you want, not what anybody else wants, it's councillor Shortall's job on that is to come up with an ethical framework that takes into account our position on issues like guns, like, you know, religious zealots or whatever, and come back with a form of words and proposals, not for you to tell him beforehand what he should have, that's what you want. Now, what we are going to have is a frank, honest discussion and debate and people will be able to put some contribution into that. And I think, you know, to actually put the cart before the horse, as you want to do, is a long way to go about it.
Councillor Kushner, would you want to come in?
Yeah, just to reiterate that, I mean, I just, I feel a little bit, I feel a little bit funny about it because of course the conversation was had, you know, at a full council and as if, like, we're going to say, okay, we want to talk about warfare in our city, it's like a slap in the face for everything that we believe in, so even to have the conversation about this motion when it's already happened and we're already in agreement with the fact that, you know, we need an ethical framework, then I just think we're leaving ourselves wide open for criticism. I do not want to see, I do not want to see events like that happen in our city. However, I do have trust in the fact that we've got an ethical framework, a committee set up to deal with that on behalf of us as Labour members. So that's why I feel so strongly about there shouldn't even be a motion here, the city solicitors told us that it's already been dealt with and then we're having a conversation that actually questions my morals about what should happen in our city.
Well, at this point, I'm unclear though whether we do have a second if it is substantive motion. There does not appear to be a second there, so in that instance...
Chair, for purposes of clarity and just to summarise debate which we've just had across members of the committee and indeed the feedback from the city solicitor, the city solicitors have ruled that the original three paragraph motion submitted by councillor Jennings is incapable of action by virtue of the actions already announced and confirmed by Mayor Anderson previously, therefore the entire text of that motion falls. Therefore, what councillor Roberts would effectively be moving, subject to the revisions confirmed during discussion, would be a brief two paragraph motion which would essentially acknowledge what has already been established in terms of councillor Shortall's role and the new panel, which will be set up to agree a charter, and also asking for this committee to receive an update, so it becomes a two paragraph motion only, that's what you'd be considering.
And I'd be very happy to second that.
Thank you, Chair. Do members have any further comments on that item?
Okay, can we move to a vote then? Councillor Jennings, I believe you're indicating you must comment further before we move to a vote.
Yes, if this is all technical procedure, then why on earth wasn't this discussed with us ahead of the meeting and the motion withdrawn from this committee if instead of allowing us 10 minutes of debate on it, it was already a foregone conclusion that it should have been withdrawn? That for me is a waste of the last 10 minutes of our time. With respect.
Thank you councillor Jennings. As you'll appreciate, city council officers are presently dealing with a high volume of queries on ongoing matters affecting the city, as indeed yourselves as members, so your comments are however noted and acknowledged. However, on occasion, we do have to respond to rulings made by officers during the course of proceedings, as is the case here.
So we have a substantive motion. Can we now vote on substantive motion?
Thank you, Chair. Do we have any members wishing to dissent from the motion as now proposed? If so, can members please unmute your microphone and indicate clearly? No, no dissension. Do we have any abstentions? No. Are all members willing to back the motion? In which case, please just nod or remain silent if you don't object, in which case the revised motion of two paragraphs is carried accordingly. Chair?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to all the officers. I would like to put on record our gratitude to the officers because this can be a very technically challenging forum, it's all new or it's, once you think you've got the hang of it, all of a sudden something goes awry. So in particular to Jill, Mike and Chris, thank you for very much you've done to make this meeting possible, okay? Our next meeting, as per item number 15, will be confirmed shortly and will be circulated members in due course. That concludes today's meeting. Thank you again to members, thank you again to officers and to those public, members of the public.